All right. Y'all ready to get started? You ready to get started?
Yes, I am.
Okay. So I'll call this meeting of the Hamlet City Council to order. We will have a moment of silence. Okay. Now we'll have adoption of agenda.
Move that we adopt.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Now we will approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Any comments from attendees tonight?
Good evening. Good to see each of you. Won't take up too much of your time. There's been something on my mind for years now. You know, I live on Jefferson Street. And the traffic there has just gotten ridiculous with the speeders. Either they're coming to 177, going 45, 50 miles an hour, slamming on brakes just to stop. And I'm in the yard, there's kids around. And then people coming off of 177, just gunning it. And if I'm in the yard, I'm probably giving some hand gestures. And it's come to a head a few times. And, you know, I had one kid that came flying by. And I just gave him that. And he slammed on the brakes. And the tire marks are still there. So me being me, and a little bit of my mother, I followed him to where he was. And it's the same house where I've had issues with a gray truck that was flying down the road. So what I propose is a speed bump. I don't know how the city is with that. But there's a sign there, but it's not working about slow down children at play. So I was thinking if we put a speed bump, say 40, 50 yards down from my house on 607, that people would get the message soon. And my son is grown up now, but there's still, I think she's a five-year-old that stays right across the street. And the corner house there has like a 10 and 11-year-old and some other little kids. So just been thinking about it for years. And I'm like, you know, let me just come down here and just see if we can get something done about it. And I just think it's very dangerous. And there's been many a times where I'm backing out. And I'm looking both ways. And then somebody comes flying down there. And then they blow the horn at me. And I'm like, so. I just thought I would propose that to the council.
I think that's a good proposal. And David, I'm aware of the dangerous situation there.
Well, wait just a minute. I asked the city manager, but I was a city attorney. But I think speed bumps have been outlawed. I don't think you can put speed bumps.
Yeah, I didn't know. And that's why.
It's a liability situation.
So you can still put them, but the league won't cover any damages done? And all the liability will go on the city?
Oh, y'all. Okay, well, I was gonna say, well, that's okay.
I agree with you, I'll be honest with you. I live the same life you do. It's horrible. Somebody's gonna get killed. But the government will not prosecute and hold people accountable for doing the bad things. And they definitely don't hold people accountable for doing things like that.
Right.
There's lawlessness everywhere. And I wish we could build a speed bump about 24 inches high. That'll put them in orbit when they hit it.
Absolutely. Yeah, well, I'm with you. And like I said, it's.
And it's frustrating for people like you and me and everybody else that's still with it.
Yeah, I'm just right there on the edge, you know, when somebody goes flying by me.
Same thing on Rollins Avenue.
Yeah, it's on Rollins. I mean, it's, people just don't care. And it's adults.
You said it, people don't care.
It's adults, it's kids.
And you ain't gonna make them care.
And all that. But anyway, I just thought I would.
There's remnants of speed bumps on Charlotte Street. But that was probably the last ones that we had. And we had people report damage and stuff.
Well, can we put some tire spikes out? When I see one coming. I'd be like, hey, sorry about that.
I just want to add things we can do. The police chief's in the room. And I know that he's listening as we're talking about this. And I appreciate you bringing it to the council today. But we also have a device that we can use that will actively monitor speed and get some data about, you know, what's going on with speed in the area. And that'll also help inform our enforcement efforts. So, you know, I'm not sure exactly where that's been deployed currently. But I'm sure once it's finished its duty cycle at that location, we can move it to a location on Jefferson Street.
As long as we're doing something, if we can't do speed bumps, then, you know, he could have one of his guys just sit right there on Clay Street, back up a little bit. And he'd probably get 10 or 15 a day, especially in the morning or in the evening, you know, when they're late for school or late for work, flying down the road. So, but anyway.
That's.
Mr. David, what's your last name?
Jenkins. Yeah, my mother had the Lakeside Venue, which y'all got. And I'm thankful. And I appreciate that.
Thanks for coming.
All right. Y'all take care.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Okay, new business. Let's see. So I'll now open the floor for our public hearing for the rezoning of the property at 1679 East US 74 Highway. Do we have anyone who would like to make public comment? Come on up.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
So my name's Thomas Neville. I'm an attorney out of Cumberland County, representing the developer and the owner in this instance. First, I want to very much thank you for having me here. I came to the planning board meeting last month. And I actually spent a lot of time at Hoffman. But I've never made it down this far south, at least anytime recently. And it was a real treat to go to the train station museum. And I got here so early that I also went to your lake, walked around your lake, which is a really nice, it's a nice lake. And the monument of Jeff the Veterans is also really nice. You have a special town here. And so I was, I got here so early last time, I had a lot of time to do some things. So this time, I didn't get here so early. But again, I'm Thomas Neville, I'm an attorney. I did quite a few of these representations in North Carolina, particularly in the southeast. And what I do is always the same. It doesn't matter what the proposed use is. Always go to the site. I spend a good bit of time at the site. And then I branch further out at the site, what's surrounding the site. So I look at the current use and the future proposed use. And I look at the surrounding area. And then I kind of look at those things and put together a presentation as to why I think this is a good fit. So that's what I've done this evening. So that's our application. Did I just push this thing here? Backwards. Okay. So in looking at the site and taking a big view and both a small view, the first thing that I usually look at is the future land use plan. The future land use plan is really the best tool that we have to make a decision as to what we want to do in the future. Your planning board spends a lot of time doing that and putting it together. And in this instance, the future land use plan shows that the future use would be neighborhood mixed use. And within neighborhood mixed use is a commercial use that is allowed, which gets us to our application for general business B2. So we think it's a really good fit. It's in the future land use plan. You'll have to tonight, you know, make a decision that what we propose is consistent or inconsistent with the land use plan. And in this instance, it is absolutely consistent with your future land use plan. So that's a good thing. What everybody wants is good, smart planning. Because you want to put commercial activities where they belong. And you want to put residential activities where they belong. And try to mix them together, you know, with something that makes sense. So in this instance, you've got a corridor coming into the city. You've got a corridor of this, excuse me, of this neighborhood mixed use, which allows for commercial activity. So again, it's a really good fit. This is a site plan. But again, remember, this is a straight-up zoning. So this is not conditional use zoning. This is more of a, I guess you'd say, a rendering of what we believe it would most likely look like. We do propose a retail use that we believe would be very, you know, similar to the site plan. If you go to the property, right now, there's an old farmhouse on the property that would be razed and this building would be built. That's an aerial. I believe at one time, Mr. Vaughn or his family may have owned a large tract. There was quite a bit of solar farm use around this, back behind it. Which again, I think supports the proposed retail use here and not a residential use. Kind of catty-corner across the street is the Carolina Brick. I guess this was a manufacturing facility. It's for sale now, catty-corner to us. A little bit closer into town, there's this bakery, the convenience store. Really want to show this overview. It shows the amount of commercial activity or establishments along Highway 74 coming into town, which goes to the reasonableness of this request and the consistency of it. Back to the land use plan. So my understanding of your ordinance is that you have to always have a finding whether it's consistent or inconsistent with the land use plan. It is consistent with the land use plan. And then also a finding as to the reasonableness of the proposed zoning change. And then also that it's not, it's in the public interest, or at least not against the public interest. In this instance, I do believe you can find all three in favor for us. It's consistent with the land use plan. It certainly is reasonable, taking the amount of commercial activity around it, the fact it's on a corridor coming into town. Commercial use is certainly reasonable in this instance. It's not against the public interest whatsoever. I don't know of any harm to the public interest. So for those reasons, I think you could find all three in our favor. I do have Mr. Greg Stewart with me, who represents the developer. If you have any specific questions with him, he'll be happy to answer them. He also is very happy staying in his seat, he tells me. Don't have any questions. But anyway, he's a good guy, and he knows what he's doing. Got any questions with me, I'd be happy to answer them. If you don't, I'll sit down real quickly. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I can close the public hearing at this time? All right. So our action is consistency statement. Do we have a motion to adopt the consistency statement?
Before we do that, I'd just like to ask TC, does everything look good on you with what you see and what you know about it?
As far as I know, I appreciate Mr. Neville pointing out, which, although I'm in his law department, you know, they are working quite well. It's general disregarding zoning, so we don't know specifically what the use is. I don't know, he may provide additional information. But, you know, I think he's done all the things we showed. He's shown that it's consistent with the land use plan. We often don't get that level of knowledge, so I appreciate that. There's nothing illegal. That said, that's something I think you could have presented. Council may decide that this is not appropriate zoning, it is not in your discretion as well.
I'll also briefly add that we have posted the property and advertised in the newspaper and done the mailed notices as prescribed by our zoning ordinance and statutes. And the consistency statement that was adopted by the planning board is included in your packet, if you would like to reference that.
I'll make a motion that it does comply with our consistency statement.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Now we need a motion to rezone the property.
So move.
All in favor? Any opposed? All righty. Thank you, gentlemen.
And I will couch your train museum.
Thank you. All right, item number eight, appointment of senior center advisory council members. We have four applicants and we can have all four. We have four.
We can't have, we.
Excuse me, sorry. We can't have as many as four, and that's what we have. We had initially said three, but that was just to meet the minimum. There are other members that have indicated that they would like to take a step back for seeking clarity from them about what that means. But I think it would be a wise move, given the four that we have, or what I would consider to be good applicants that have submitted their applications, to recommend that the board appoint all four applications.
Can we do this in one motion? Just simply by encompassing the four submitted applications as part of the motion?
I would say you can, council member, but you may want to ask if there are any members of council who wish to discuss this applicant.
Does anybody have any objection to the four applications we've got?
I like the walking man's friend. I have no objection.
So are you making a motion, Abby?
Yes.
Okay.
If it suits everybody. Anybody have any problems? If not, I'd like to recommend that we appoint the four people who have submitted applications, Catherine Bethay, Dewey Brower, Lisa Lucky, and Edith Purcell.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Item number nine, consideration of garbage truck bids and budget amendments.
Sorry.
I think the city manager might want to update a little bit on this, if you want to expand on it.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'm sorry, I was having a sidebar there.
Yep, I apologize. I distracted the manager.
But I've included in your packet the bid tabulation sheet. The bid for the garbage truck was more than we had budgeted for. So in your packet, along with the bid tabulation sheet and one of the budget amendments following the bid tabulation sheet, there is a accompanying budget amendment to purchase the garbage truck using unspent capital outlay funds. So we budgeted $180,000. We do have a bid of $219,031. The good news is that is many of these trucks are built to order. This is a demo unit. There is some things they have to do to it should we, should council approve the bid to make it ready, which we are understanding would take about a month or so, four to six weeks. But it won't be, you know, months or years, like some of the larger custom-built apparatus that take a long time to get through the supply chain. So they haven't bought a garbage truck since the 1920 fiscal year. And they need to be on a regular rotation to maintain our level of service. So I tried to put all the information together so that we could act as swiftly as possible. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about what's been presented.
Are they brand new?
It's brand new. Technically, it's a demo, so it's been traveled around a little bit, but it's never been in service. So it's clean and shiny.
Have we seen it?
Yes. I haven't personally, but staff has. They have to install the tippers that tip the cans. That's the main thing that they have to do and some other minor things. But they actually don't install those until they have a customer.
And it comes with a warranty, I suppose.
That's a good question. I'm not exactly sure about the warranty. But I know that the manufacturer, any new vehicle comes with a manufacturer warranty. But I don't have the details at this time.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
We need to make a motion for each part of that or together. TC.
Just so the record's clear, why don't you go ahead and make a motion for each part of that?
Separately?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I make a motion that we go forward purchasing the trash truck by Amic Equipment.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now we're done budget amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve the budget amendment.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next is item number 11, proclamation honoring Black History Month.
Skip number 10.
I thought I did number 2. Oh.
That's other budget amendment.
Okay. But we're doing all, and we're doing these, the next one, number 10 individually?
Yes, yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to just briefly overview them, so that council's aware of the changes in them. These are a little more than our routine transfers. So I'll just begin in the order that they're sitting in. I believe this is the order they're sitting in. But the first one would be the general fund. The main request here, in addition to some of the regular transfers, is the purchase, the capital purchase of a rotary broom, which will be an attachment for a tractor that we've recently purchased, which will allow us to clean our sidewalks and streets, particularly the ones without curbing, where they kind of get overgrown over time and narrow. The rotary broom is a very powerful, large broom that allows us to sweep away the nature and make sure that the street is passable. So I just wanted to call that out specifically, because it is a new capital purchase.
Have we got employees that can operate this machine?
Yes, sir. It's on a tractor that is used by various members of the staff. All the staff members, anytime you get a new piece of equipment or a new attachment, you have to learn the intricacies of it. But certainly, certainly multiple people will be involved in that.
Now go ahead and do that one now. Have we got a motion for that?
So move.
All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, thank you, council. The next one is for the enterprise fund. This one is actually just noting, the largest amount here is $30,000 for repairs to the clarifier. That was quite a large amount. But no additional purchases to call out, like the garbage truck. So, or sorry, the rotary broom. So this one's a little more routine. And I don't, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does it mount that up?
Well, no, they don't. Yeah, I apologize. The capital outlay reduction should be 43 to balance that. I apologize for that error. But the funds here are coming from unspent capital outlay. So there is no change to the revenue side of the budget. We're just offsetting the expenditures.
Make a motion we accept would the change to reflect the correct price of $43,000.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
The final budget amendment for you tonight is regarding the ARP fund. Previously, in a previous council meeting, the council had authorized, we discussed the City Lake Trail, and the council had authorized me to carry out a project not to exceed $150,000 for the full survey, engineering, and design of a trail that would complete a loop around the city lake. The contract, however, came in above that threshold. So, and I've included that contract for informational purposes. But the request tonight would be to increase the amount of authorization and budget for the City Lake project.
How much?
It's an additional $35,900. And that includes, again, all the design to make that project 100% shovel-ready, so that we can go out for additional funding. And we have a grant of $400,000, but that's limited to construction. So we have to cover the planning, design, engineering, in order to get the construction funds.
Well, I think just, we have just purchased the building down there. There's no reason now that we don't, we need to proceed with whatever we need to do to work on the trail and do anything we can to City Lake at this time now. The main thing was the building. We got it. And I think we should proceed with everything else, the trail.
Is that a motion?
Well, I can make it to decrease the funding from 150 to, what, 190?
Yeah. And including the budget amendment is.
215.
Yeah, the authorization was 150, so it'd be $185,900.
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion that we increase the amount of money that we set aside to include now the extra $30,000, or 35.
Just as a point of clarification, and the manager had mentioned this, but don't anybody be confused, this is also including the funds for the purchase of the Lakeside Venue. So the actual transfers, oh, I'm sorry.
No, the Lakeside Venue was in the consent agenda.
Okay, so.
But it was like a budget amendment, but it was over what we argued.
The budget amendment also includes the Lakeside Venue.
That's what I meant. It's just because Mr. Martin had mentioned the 35.9. I just wanted to make sure that the entire amount was authorized. So that's the only clarification. Thank you.
Do we have a motion in a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any opposed?
I don't think we should go that way.
Okay. Now. Proclamation honoring Black History Month. Whereas Black History Month is an opportunity to share the many historical and present contributions of African-Americans to the city of Hamlet. And whereas African-Americans have played significant roles in the leadership of Hamlet's economic, cultural, spiritual, social, educational, and political development. And whereas the city of Hamlet celebrates Black History Month, recognizing the impact made by our African-American community. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember the rich history of a people who helped to build this country through neighborhood leadership and involvement, advance the cause of civil rights, and strengthen families and communities. And whereas during Black History Month, all residents are encouraged to reflect on the past successes and challenges of African-Americans and look to the future, building upon this heritage, and to continue working for the ideals of freedom, equality, and justice. Now therefore, I, Amy Gwynne, Mayor of the city of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim February 24th, 2024, as Black History Month.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Yes.
This is a copy of Iowa State Magazine, and for the month of February, to be in Black History Month, there's John C. Coltrane featured. And it's a very, very nice article about, Hamlet is mentioned one time on it. But it's a nice, a very good article, takes several, and I'm just proud that John C. Coltrane, I wish he had put that mural we have down on Raleigh Street on it. But this is a very, I thought this was a very good article. And I wanted to bring that up for the people. If they get a chance, get the magazine and read it.
All righty, thank you. All right, so city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to note a few things for council. First of all, we closed our public survey for the Streetscape Master Plan for the downtown area. We had about 300 responses, which was a great final push, and that closed at the end of January. And I wanted to thank everyone who responded, those that live in the community or have
or have visited or may have been around when we were passing out the flyers for the survey a few months ago. That's a great response, and we're looking forward to digging into those responses and making sure that we have a plan for our downtown that reflects the community's needs and desires. We do, we will have an additional public workshop, which we're currently in the planning phases of. We're looking at planning that tentatively for the first Food Truck Friday, so maybe getting some of the people that are coming out to the food trucks to get them to engage in our public input session for the downtown master plan as well. So look for more information on that when we officially set the date. I want to remind council and the public that we will have a budget meeting on February the 27th here in this chamber at 5:30, and that will formally kick off our annual budget process. And finally, I'll just mention that baseball registration will begin on February the 20th. You can register here at City Hall, and we look forward to having a good season of baseball for those folks that register, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All righty, so we'll move on to comments from the council. Mr. Martin?
Chip Gordon, the coach for the American Legion baseball team. In conversation with him, he's asked that if I would line up another opening season game night for the team. And I told him I'd have to talk to the council about it. I, I don't mind doing it, but I wouldn't want to do it or tell him that I'll do it unless I got full support of the council and city of Hamlet, city manager. If y'all say, yes, let's do it, then I'll try to get things moving and lined up, to have it done. I don't know the opening date yet, but it'd be in May. But if you're going to do anything, you got to start early. So if I got support of the mayor. All right, well, I'll, I'll tell them, I'll tell them what happened. I think just a consensus, but we'll start, we'll have another grand opening night for the baseball team, opening season game. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
I'm going to get it, you know?
As, I just want to show love and honor to my hometown hero, John Coltrane, late, great saxophonist. I consider myself a saxophonist because of him. All of my friends know that, yes, Maurice, we know John Coltrane was born in Hamlet, North Carolina. So always give, show love from him. We lost him at, you know, the early age of 40, the year my father graduated from high school here in Hamlet, 1967. So love to my hometown hero, John Coltrane. Thank you again to the citizens, and please come out to the meetings.
Brother, won't you give us a, a performance down there?
I will one day.
Huh?
I will one day. No, no challenge me.
You really do play?
Can you sing as well?
Wow.
You can play, and Abby can sing.
I don't want to outshine him. Give him a chance.
All right, Mr. Sellers, have you got anything?
Other than the fact about the John C. Coltrane thing, and I'd like to, I was reading through my documents here, and I'd like to comment and give appreciation to our Hamlet Police Department on the final reports that we get, and I'm going to tell you something. The city of Hamlet gets more than their money's worth for the way it's run. And I applaud and I give my regards to Chief Brown and his staff. Thank you for the reports every month. It's very informative. And thank you for the hard work and dedication. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Ms. Gavington?
I think this meeting's really good, because it kicks off our budget process. It kind of gets our feet wet before springtime comes, and all the things begin to happen, like the American Legion games. And so it, it opens up a new season for the city. It's a beginning rather than winding up. And I just think we can't say enough good things about the people that work for us. And every day, we get good news about people joining our team, and I, I think the team with the city of Hamlet is, is getting close to perfection. So I'm, I'm really excited, and I want to thank everybody who has, who has a part in making us a success.
Thank you. Mr. McLean?
Okay. I just have a couple of quick things. The Hamlet Senior Center is continuing to have lots of activities and day trips for our seniors. And one thing that's going on right now, Director Amanda Kempin has a wonderful, and it's huge, huge, spring gift basket that she is raffling off. The tickets are $5 each. It has a lot of spring gardening type and other, other things in it. And the money is going toward events down there. And you can purchase tickets at the Hamlet Senior Center or the Visitor Center. So please consider doing that. You don't have to be a senior to purchase tickets. And I'm not sure exactly what the date is for the drawing. It's in April, I believe, maybe. I don't know. Don't hold me to that. And you don't have to be present to win. So please go buy a ticket. And also, the city is having a cleanup day of the City Lake on March 18th, from 1 to 4, where they're going to be cutting a lot of brushback, cleaning up from along the shoreline. So that'll get our area looking even better for all these future projects we have there. Yes, 1, 1 to 4, yes. So that is all I have. Need a motion to go into closed session for attorney-client privilege and personnel.
So move.
All in favor?